Right here.
Dr. Levin?
Yes.
You gotta back up and talk into a microphone so they can hear you on the television.
All right. I live at this point.
Now, you have to come, you have to come back to the microphone, or take the microphone with you.
Thank you, ma'am. Pull the mic out.
See the microphone right there?
I can do it from here.
Okay.
Water flows down from the, from the south toward the north. We have flooding which does take place and which we spent a good deal of money to straighten things out. We are not interested in having additional floodwaters come down, an additional construction in this road which is going to be above our basement floor. Consequently, we get water coming through this way and the water stands in the soil over here because people on both, on this side of the street do not necessarily channel their stormwater from gutters out to the road. Or if they do channel it out to the road, there are times when it floods over onto our property. During, I think it was 2004, 2006, the drain across Arlington Road flooded and it flooded out the property on this side of us and it created a lake on Arlington Road right here into which an elderly driver drove into it. So what I'm indicating to you is that which, whatever is accepted according to this, our conclusion is option one, which takes this, which rebuilds this particular pipe, is the most satisfactory. It's the most effective and reliable alternative according to Panoni's report of April 7th. Option two, which is redirecting the flows along Mill where a third of the flow from north, from north into Ridgeway and Adlyarns would also flood along, below, and above Mill Road where we're located. Here at 414 Mill Road, my answer is very simple. We would oppose anything that would redirect flows away from Woodmere and Ridgeway down Mill Road, making Ridgway's flooding into Mills and Arlington's flooding. We don't want that. We would consider taking legal action if any of the procedure is taken that's going to flood east along Mill Road. And there's likely to be regrading which would take place that would send that water down Mill. As you know, even roadbeds are not impervious to water flows. So, that's the very simple explanation, that we believe that an alternative other than the ones which have been proposed should be taken. We think the storm grates that are, that are, that enter Mill Road which carry the stormwater down from up gradient are unsatisfactory. They're too small.
Okay.
And even the proposed are not large enough.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Next, next row. I'm sorry, in the second, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Right here.
Hi, my name is Tom Cramp. I'm a real estate agent with Waggoner Real Estate. And George Daley had asked me to come tonight to just share my experiences with trying to sell his property recently. I think I first had listed George's home.
Was it 2010, George?
2009.
2009. Right after listing it, there was a, we were all set to do an open house and we had a major flooding which we had canceled. George had severe flooding that I think because of all the emotion that it's gone through, him trying to deal with the flooding down in his area, he chose to take the home off the market, which we were happy to do while I think he tried to look into seeing if there was some other recourse for him. Recently, in May of this past year, George had asked me again to see if we could sell the house for him. We had the property up on the market until mid-September and at this point, we have taken it off the market after the results. George has a beautiful home. He's done a great job keeping it maintained over the years. But because of disclosure laws, when we get to the point of having to share the information that he has provided about the flooding that occurred in the area, it's really made the home unsellable for him. The people that might have had an interest at this point do not. Also, there's people trying to get insurance when they run what they call flu reports from insurance companies about the flooding claims that have occurred there. Again, it would raise the cost of insurance for some new person going on to the property because of prior claims. So, George had asked me to come here just to share his experiences. Unfortunately, as nice as his home is, we weren't able to find buyers because of the conditions of the flooding there.
Thank you. All right. The second row, over here? Anyone in the second row? Second row? Yeah, that's you.
Good evening. My name is Divana Duke. I live at 33 Meadowbrook Road. I've been a resident of Havreford Township since 1995. So, George probably said what most of us want to say. You know, I've had so much damage and unfortunately, unlike maybe some of the other residents, being a single parent at the time, wasn't able to make a lot of the repairs, still not able to make a lot of repairs. My furnace, hot water heater, basement completely destroyed, vehicle damaged. My homeowner's insurance was canceled because of all the repairs I was unable to do. Every time it rained, the water literally, I'm at the corner of Meadowbrook and Spring, literally flows very, very strong into my basement, four, three to four feet of water. The very first time, I was very, very devastated. My neighbor came, knocked on the door, in my night clothes, went out to see all of this water. I just, I mean, it has been very, very devastating for me. It has been such a hardship. My neighbors have helped me from time to time with different repairs that had to be done that I wasn't able to afford. And I just really did not expect this. You know, always prior to that, maintain, pay my bills, but this situation has caused such a hardship for me that I don't know what else to do. I cannot afford to make the repairs that I continue to make. Basement totally destroyed, clothes for my children, clothes for myself was destroyed. It's just been very, very devastating for me. So I really hope that something can come out of this, something very, very positive for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Second room? Commissioner?
Good evening. I'm Ken Richardson, 513 Covington Road, Havertown, Pennsylvania. And prior to Mr. Bruido, I was the Eighth Ward Commissioner. And prior to me was Ben Kapustin for about 30 years. And as you heard previous, he was in one of the letterheads, so that gives you an indication how long this has been going on. All the slides and all the presentations and Mr. Panoni, and we talk about pipe and rerouting and all this, but this is what it's all about. Your legislation has to address the heartache. Four or five cars lost. I sat on George's porch in 2004 and I couldn't sit there because of the fumes. I couldn't breathe. Guys in white suits are walking around. And then he has to move back into that house. It's over Allen's, we're pulling branches out of grates and emptying, getting the trash trucks there so we get rid of all this stuff. So, it's terrible. It's terrible to go through once, but twice, three times, four times, five times?
Absolutely.
Your legislation has to address a couple of things. One is the infrastructure and how we're going to correct that. The other thing is, how do we, how do we fix these people and what they lost? Not only money and structure, but I don't know, when I talk to George or any of these fine people that, the lady before me, the tears come. It's hard. And I know Mrs. Hall and Jeff over there, you guys are real estate. And George is positioned to try to sell a house and to say, well, yeah, I've been flooded six times and I lost five cars, but I really hope you're interested in my house. It's a tough sell. Even good salesmen, it's a tough sell. So, in your deliberations and things that have to be done, I leave room for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, and then, next row? You, right here, sir, with beer?
Hello, everyone. My name's Doo P. I live down on Spring Road, 335. I've been there since 1978, been a resident in Havreford Township since 74. Up until like 93, 94, I think that's when everything kind of started. Things, life was good down there. It was a nice neighborhood. Everybody got, we were a close-knit neighborhood and we can still call our neighborhood today a very close-knit neighborhood. We, we all get together, we help each other in times of trouble, we help each other when the storms come, we help each other when the snow comes, and we make sure that everybody's looked after down there. It's turning out to be a relatively newer neighborhood now, but when we, when I moved there, it was generally, a lot of the original owners from when the houses were built in '23 were still there and we looked out for them and so forth. Anyway, this has been happening for so long that I can't even sit here and recite dates to you as which one was the big one, although someone just said it was 94 at George's, or 2004. And that was the most devastating one. We've had them after that as well. The last time I was at a meeting here was probably around that time period and I had an abundance of pictures. And after sitting through the entire meeting, listening about where home plate should be at one of the baseball fields, everybody wanted to go home at 11 o'clock. Well, the whole neighborhood came up and were waiting for their turn. And when we passed the pictures out, everybody was very concerned about it. Then all the commissioners sat there, they didn't want to go home. They wanted to see more and more of these. I would have them today, however, in my office, which was down in my family room, which was in my basement at one time, got flooded out again and I lost them. So I don't have anything to show you. I can only tell you what I've gone through. The experiences that I've had and the losses that I've had is just devastating. And now I am also in the process of selling my house and again, running into a stone wall for the same purpose. People, you know, they come on a day that it's been raining overnight. I hate for people to come in because the first thing they do is they open my basement door, they see water downstairs in the basement, puddles. Me, I'm used to it. I've been living with it for 36 years. But to them, they look at it and said, no, I don't want this place. Walk right away. You know, I want to get on with my life, you know? I lost my wife, she went through all this and we lived there for all these years, part of the community and so forth. And now, when we need some help, it seems like, you know, we're standing there, you know, holding the bag. It's not just me, but it's all my good neighbors that live here. We've all, we've stood there in the street and held each other and cried over this crap. You know, I remember the pictures that I took. There was a standing, our street was standing, had standing water, I think, up to the bottom of the windows of your car for an entire hour that you could put your canoe or boat or whatever you wanted to do. You could have went up and down the street. It didn't even move. It just kind of sat there. And the thing that was most unbelievable to me was I got a call from a neighbor who was way up around the corner, I think it was in '04, when they said, "Look out your front door, quick." And I looked up the street and as I looked up towards Lewis where it comes around Foster, there was a wall of water that was three feet high coming around that I can only describe as it looked like a stampede with dust of cattle coming down around there. And within a minute, that whole street was covered up to the car windows. I couldn't believe it. Cars were floating down the street and like a strainer, just bouncing into one another, turning sideways until they finally hit something that was stationary, they couldn't move anymore. Fortunately, it didn't affect any of my cars, even though they floated. But my neighbors, I remember being out there all day long with vacuums, tearing their, you know, their trunks apart, tearing out their seats and everything else. I mean, this is just our vehicles that we have to get back and forth. They can't even sell them. I mean, you can't sell a house today because you get water. You can't sell a car today because it had, you know, water damage to it. There's priorities here. I know, you know, this is, you know, not the main thing that everybody thinks about all the time. But all these people that I have in here that are friends of mine who are actual neighbors and we've all lived together for 35 years or more, are all the same ones who are paying the taxes to try to keep our neighborhood together and finding out that, you know, it's just falling apart and falling into pieces. I don't care about the baseball fields, honestly. Kids still have a baseball field to play in. It doesn't have to be the biggest one. We have priorities here that this gentleman here, I know exactly where his house is and I know how, the problems that he gets too, and he's not even in my neighborhood. And the Winfield section, I don't know, I don't know anybody here from there, but I know people who do live one there because I'm a contractor in this township. And I work down there and I see it. Something has to be done other than, you know, band-aiding it. You know, they did come and they fixed the streets. I loved it when they did. It seemed to carry off the water and the following year, we got flooded again. Township did come down. They had somebody come down, the Delaware County Fire and Rescue or whatever, fire and water, whatever it was. And they came on a Sunday and cleaned up. But of course, the money, the little bit of money that we got back went right to them for coming over to help us clean up. So our losses, again, were just something out of pocket that we ate. But we weren't up here complaining. We pulled each other together and we tried to, you know, help each other again. But it's got to stop. It's time for action here. You guys have the power to do it. You have the resources. You know, let's get to work on this and let's see what you can do for all these people in here. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you gotta keep going. There's more people who want to talk to us, so please, can we keep it to three minutes?
I am trying, okay. It's nothing you haven't heard already, but my name's Lucille Carterelli. I live on Spring Road. We've been residents of the township for 47 years, okay? This basically is entitled, and I wrote it this afternoon, "Living with the Threat of Flood and Its Ramifications." Starts out with a definition of quality of life. And that's what we're talking about besides the brick and mortar portion of this discussion tonight. And it goes on to, it's, you know, enhancement of wholesome food and clean air, and I'm going to skip part of it. And it says, "It's a measure of the energy and power a person is endowed with that enable him or her to enjoy and prevail over life's challenges irrespective of the handicaps he or she may have." There's a definition called "Quality of Life Management" is the approach to management rooted in the belief that all those who benefit from a community of society or society have a responsibility to help preserve it and make it better. The impact of a natural disaster, in this case flooding rains or traumatic event, goes far beyond physical damage. The emotional toll can result in a wide range of intense, confusing, and sometimes frightening emotions. Just as it takes time to clear the rubble and repair the damage, it takes time to recover your emotional equilibrium and rebuild your life. Natural disasters and other catastrophic events are extraordinarily stressful, both to survivors and observers. Such disasters shatter your sense of security, making you feel helpless and vulnerable. Whether or not you were directly impacted by the traumatic event, it's normal to feel anxious, scared, and uncertain about what the future may bring. Usually, these unsettling thoughts and feelings fade as life starts to return to normal, but they're always there lurking in the back of your mind. But once someone has been through or witnessed such an event, it is really hard to return to one's normal life, for you spend your time waiting for the next rainstorm to hit and possibly be flooded out once again. How would you like to have your waking moments thinking about the possibility each time you hear the weather forecast of a serious rain event coming your way? It truly affects your personal quality of life. Your minds, your mind starts listing what needs to be done and when. You don't sleep. You have to change your plans, miss out on family events. You must start moving items and making sure your sump pumps are working. All this affects the way you live your life. If an event like this has not directly affected you, you have no possible way of understanding the feelings and frustrations it causes and the potential physical effects it can have on your body. There are many people here tonight that can tell their stories about how their quality of life has been affected by flooding or just the anticipation of a coming flood to this community. A flood or threat of flood truly changes the way you live. To say the least, you have no idea what it's like unless you have gone through it. But I tell you, it's one hell of a way to have to live your life. Your life is managed by a weather report and some people get physically ill. You worry about dealing with the insurance companies and just the time and physical energy it takes for cleanup, not including the expense. And beyond this, think about yourselves when you're ready to leave this area, whether it is to retire to a nice sunny location or just move on. And you realize that you are unable to sell your home because of information you now have to disclose if your home has been affected by flooding. What I have to say to you tonight is simply this: You, as our township representatives and managers, have the responsibility to preserve our community. To have ongoing unresolved flooding in this township is not going to preserve the kind of community we want to live in. I believe in time, these unsettled problems will directly affect the future of Havreford Township, and I don't believe any of us wants that. So please listen and find a resolution for our problem for all our sakes. We have moved to live in this township because of all of its conveniences and well-known school district. Many of us have lived here for a long time and it's time that these flooding problems be settled once and for all. Thank you.
One of the people that lives in one of the houses that are worth nothing now. I bought my house in 2004, the day before, no, the day after the first flood.
Name of your name?
Henry Rattus. Dory Martin, 203 Juniper Road. My mom was an original owner. We never had water till that day. I mean, maybe you'd get an inch or something every so often, but we didn't have water. We weren't the people, like on spring, they've gotten it since I was a little girl. We never had water. Got flooded, I lost my car, every single thing I owned, and we cut every wall. My mom said, "Dory, if you don't want to buy the house, you don't have to." I said, "Mom, it's a fluke. It never happened before. It's never going to happen again." And I bought the house. I figured it out recently. It's cost me $120,000. I owe $170,000 on my house, so I'd be damn near paid for. I'm also a single parent and I now have a child who started school in Havreford College, which if we have another flood, he won't be able to go to. They said about when other people in the rain, they go home and we go out. I set my alarm for every hour and I check the park because as soon as the park starts filling, it fills quickly, really quickly. And we dial 911, but there's really not a lot they can do. It's a flood. It just, Chris Connell's kid came and helped do my basement, helped empty it out. You lose every appliance you own, you lose all your walls, you lose your peace of mind. Like Alan left, he was my twin. It's every minute, every time you think it's going to rain, first I move my car because I've lost a car and I can't afford to lose another one. And then you just wait for it to come. And like the Band-Aids that you guys are trying to do, I understand that you're trying and I appreciate it more than anything. You guys gave me a door dam. In theory, that's going to stop the first two feet. The problem is, and I called you last week so I could tell you this, you guys told me you paid almost 10 grand for these things? I can see light underneath it. I've never taken it out. It's the one for the garage. It's giant. I've never taken it out. We can see light under it. Did they come with any kind of warranties? The door dams? Anyone? Does anyone know?
Is it not working?
If I can see light under it, water can go under it.
Well, I'm saying, because I know the other, a couple of their homes have it. But you know what? Then enter the meeting.
Okay. That's, I just, if there's anything you can do, I was naive enough in 2004 when it first happened, I thought the township was going to make good on it. I really did. I thought, well, they know this is their fault. They're going to take care of it. Obviously, it's millions of dollars and it's not that easy to take care of. I didn't realize that. But try to do something, like isn't there someone we can apply to somewhere to help? Anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Livingston. I live at 27 Meadowbrook Road and I've lived at this address for almost 30 years with my wife and we had two, two kids there. And I, my question's really quite simple. It's actually, I have a question more than a statement. Everybody's talked about the emotional issues that we've all felt is, what are the options besides applying to FEMA for funding this? This $8 million township-wide project, $4 million in our neighborhood. Are we going to float a bond issue? Obviously, grants aren't going to, they may help, but in the end, the township's probably going to have to, if they want to, if we want to solve the problem, we're going to have to fund this ourselves. So how, what are the thought, what are the ideas on the table about how to fund this $8 million project? We're not going to get it from FEMA, probably.
We answer the questions at the end, but it would be floating a bond is what we, that would be our only... What is, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I'm, you know, there's so many questions right now. It's a really good question. I mean, I was just asking, you know, saying to Commissioner Segal the same thing. You know, there's questions about our state representatives and our, you know, senators and there's a lot of framework and, and not to, you know, get into all this now, but I honestly am so, so sorry that you've been through all this. I really mean that. And we will, we will get to this, but I'm not sure. It's a very good question. I'm not sure.
We'll answer everything when, when everybody finishes talking, we'll, we'll address all these issues.
It just seems, it comes down to that. Is that how we as a community are going to pay for this in one way or the other it's going to be paid for? So that's what I think. Scott, we need to know or have some reasonable...
That discussion, I think, will come up at the end of this meeting.
Well, thank you.
I'm Sharon Livingston. I live at 27 Meadowbrook Road and we've been there since 80...
That discussion, I think, will come up at the end of this meeting.
Well, thank you.
I live at 27 Meadowbrook Road and we've been there since '84. And my first question also is, I'd like to know what's going to happen to our houses and this cannot go on and on. I met, I'm a teacher and Chris came over to our house on Labor Day in, about 2011, I think, because the water was roaring down the driveways. And I am supposed to be getting ready to be a teacher the next day. Instead, I am sitting in my basement cleaning it, wasting my time again. So, we had a ruined car, we could not afford to get rid of it, and we drove around in it for a year, stinking every time it rained. So, I dread selling my house. I see George's house, I see Steve's house, sitting on the market, and I dread selling it. I also dread being a little old lady cleaning out my basement. So, I want to know, when are you going to do something? I don't want to hear the grant didn't go through. I want to hear what you're going to do. Thank you.
I don't know what.
Okay. Is that it for that row? Anyone else in that row? Lois, you good? Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Diane Heller and I live on Ridgeway and I'm sure the commissioners are tired of seeing me here. It's been a number of months and I thank you for taking it this far. This is a huge accomplishment and it should never have taken it this long to get to this point. We've lived in our house since 1998, but these people have lived in their homes longer than that. And I'm sorry to know that all of their hard work and fight, that they tried to fight for their homes and their daily well-being of living a life where you don't have to worry about when it's going to rain and the destruction that it takes on your house and your vehicles and your soul. I mean, it's horrible. We've lived through five of these. And I just think that, you know, we're all human and we're all a family here and we have all of these people and it would be a darn shame if nothing gets resolved and we've made it this far. We're pleading with you to hear us and to help us solve this problem. I understand if there aren't grants. I understand if FEMA and the rest of the state is not going to sit and support and help us. I was born and raised in this township and I'm 51 years of age. And I moved here to raise my child because I wanted to bring her up in this township. It's pathetic to think that it would get this far and nothing...